I know we're live right now, Sherri, but you could you tell me where I need to click on to pull this up?
When you, it's redirecting it to YouTube, so go back to the channel. And you will be able to see. Hold on one second. You can do a refresh. And you should be able to find it. I'm gonna go ahead and do it on mine.
Is it under home or videos or?
Actually, if you just go to YouTube and search for Garfield Heights City Schools. Do a refresh and you'll see it right there live. Do it on, go to YouTube, like search in within YouTube.
What I did, I called up Garfield Heights City Schools. And then there's playlists and uploads.
Okay. And hold on, I'm sending it to you right now.
Okay.
Everyone who's on will be with you in just one moment.
I apologize, the superintendent's having a technical difficulty.
No worries. No worries, we're gonna send it to you right now.
Oh, okay.
Everyone who's on will be with you in just one moment. So you're gonna have to mute.
Apologize, the superintendent's having a difficult.
There we go, I just muted you, Mr. Hanky. So pause the video and then you can get started and we'll ready to roll.
All right, Mrs. Bailey, will the chat still work if the video is paused?
It will still work, yes.
Excellent. Sorry, folks. Again, I'm Chris Hankin, the superintendent of Garfield Heights City Schools. We wanted to have this live town hall with you tonight. To go over some information regarding the remote learning in terms of the Chromebooks and logging in. And kind of the nuts and bolts of how online learning is gonna work. My role tonight is going to be as the facilitator and to help Mrs. Bailey. By monitoring the chat to make sure that we can. Answer all of your questions. This is gonna be for one hour. And we will, we will try to get to as many as we can. We also have Yolanda Hamilton here, our diversity and equity consultant. And Sean Patton, our assistant superintendent. If there are any other pertinent questions that we may have. This is geared toward parents. So we, we, we hope that this will be informational for you. And we'll go from there. Mrs. Bailey, wanna take it away?
Absolutely, thank you, everyone. I'm just gonna go ahead and share my screen and we'll go ahead and get started here. So we thought it would be a really good idea. To, the night before school starts, to talk about some things related to the technology. There have been parents that have had questions. We've been getting a lot of phone calls and emails. Teachers have been relaying information. And we wanted to share a little bit about, if you have a question, if you're having a problem with technology, that you know where to go to get help. So with that, we'll get started. So all of the students in Garfield Heights City Schools have Google accounts, which is also their Gmail account, their email address. And everyone is lastname dot firstname at GH Bulldogs.org. Now, there's a 26 character limit for creating the email address. So when we do this, we remove all hyphens, all spaces, apostrophes, periods, dashes, any other special character we remove. So it's just gonna be lastname, firstname at GH Bulldogs.org. Now, there are a couple of students that are duplicate, where they have actually the same name and we've had to add a middle initial. Or there's some students where maybe their name is long and we've tried to find out a little bit more information from them. About how they would like their email address to be. So there are those rare situations where you still might have questions. Now, one of the things that we wanted to do is we wanted to have our K2 students. Go ahead and not have to type a username and password. The system we're using called ClassLink allows you to, with the camera on the Chromebook, scan a quick card. With their QR code and it automatically logs them into their Chromebook. And their ClassLink Launchpad automatically opens. Now, I do know there were a couple of issues with that today. We had some tickets open from Elmwood, so I have a ticket open with support and I'll be working on that. But in general, we thought this might be a little bit faster way for students, younger students to log in. But they too can still use their username. Same thing, lastname dot firstname and password. Now, it's not. A good secure thing to do to say anything about passwords online. But you can reach out to. People in each school if you need help. So in the high school, Michelle Haddon, who is the guidance secretary. The middle school, Angela Italian, the guidance secretary, they both have the ability to change a student's password if there's an issue with logging in. Now, for all the other elementary schools, as well as. For all the other elementary schools, as well as Learning Center, the Digital Academy. You can just email technologydepartment@GHBulldogs.org. You can always do that. Now, there's five of us in the team and those five of us will also receive it. They'll all receive the email and one of us will respond to your question. As you might imagine, we've had a lot of questions today, so we're still working on responding to everybody, but I assure you that we will. You may have heard us talk about the ClassLink Launchpad. I wanted to talk about this briefly. This is a picture of my Launchpad and ClassLink. I changed the desktop to have a nice pretty flower photo with birds. But in essence, it's like a phone or an iPad or a tablet. Where you have a desktop and you have all these icons on it. And for our students in Garfield Heights, as well as our staff. Many of these icons are directly connected to programs that the teachers will be using with them. They're already loaded with their student information. It's single sign-on, so they don't have to type another username or password. It's gonna take their Google information, their regular account. And when they click on an icon, it's automatically gonna log them into different programs. A lot of curricular software is on here, as well as Google Classroom and Gmail. To sign into Google Class, to sign into ClassLink. When the students should have the screen open up automatically for them. All they have to do is click Sign In with Google. In my case, I'm gonna sign in with my account, so now I'm gonna pick my actual Google account. And I would be logged in. Some particular icons that you'll need to pay attention to, depending on the age of your child. Is the Google Classroom icon. So it looks like a chalkboard sort of with some heads, three little heads in it. Google Classroom is the mechanism or the software that all district staff is gonna be, are gonna be using to. To teach their classes. It's gonna have assignments and homework and links to videos and activities. It will also contain Zoom links for Zoom video conferencing. It will also contain. Google Meet links, if they're using that as well. So you'll wanna make sure that your students log into Google Classroom. I see a lot of chat messages going on. We'll get to those. The other thing on here that they'll want to use is Gmail. Now, we have this for our middle school and high school students, as well as fourth and fifth grade this year. We found out that was really important as a way of communicating. When they click on Gmail, they will be able to email their teachers and ask questions. So Gmail is another icon that'll be really important. So what should you do if you, if there's an issue with the Chromebook that's assigned to you? On all of the Launchpads in ClassLink, there's an icon with a computer and a life preserver. And it says, open a Chromebook ticket. We have a new system now that will allow students to open a ticket for their Chromebook and tell us what's wrong. I have this video linked on my YouTube channel, as well as the website. I'm just gonna click it for a couple of seconds here. We'll watch the end of it later. All right. I'm gonna show you where these links are later, but essentially, it's a pretty easy system. Where you can go ahead and you can open a ticket for us. In fact, nine of them opened today already. I was just looking at them. Okay. We did send out information about Chromebook insurance. The insurance costs $18. And it covers accidental damage. If something is stolen or vandalized. If you have an issue with a cracked screen, you will be able to then, for $18, get all of this replaced. Now, I did have a parent ask me, why would I wanna buy Chromebook insurance if I have homeowner's insurance or renter's insurance? Well, sometimes our deductibles are very large. This is insurance policy for $250 and it's just for the device. So everything will go ahead and get covered, so I just wanted to make mention of that. To pay for Chromebook insurance, you can pay at your child's school. But there's a link under Quick Links on the website that's called Easy Pay. And you can go there and you can actually pay it online and you can pay for more than one Chromebook at one time. There are many parents and I'm looking at the chat and I see it there. They're saying, my computer is locked. And I can't log on to it. My child's Chromebook came home and it's locked. The first thing you need to do in the lower right-hand corner is connect your home Wi-Fi. Once you do that, the unlock. The unlocks signal will be sent to the Chromebook and it will unlock. You may need to restart it. But once you connect it to the Wi-Fi, you should be fine and you shouldn't have a problem with it after that. One thing I did wanna make mention is Parent Access. This is not something that's new. This is something that will allow you as a parent to go ahead and check your child's grades. Student schedules are there as well. I put a link on here to a YouTube link to the company that made Progress Book, Parent Access, which is called Software Answers. They have some information there on how to do this, so that information is also on here. When you, if you are new to Garfield Heights City Schools, or it's been a while since we've had summer. To sign in, you're gonna see, you're gonna go to, click on that website and it's gonna take you to a screen like this. On the next screen, you'll see, if you already have an account, you'll just click on the Sign In button. If you have a Parent Access account code to create an account. Hang on, I apologize, my, my video pictures are in the way. You're gonna click on Sign Up here and you're gonna use that Parent Access code to create an account for you. Where do you get that Parent Access code? You should have hopefully received it in your packet from school and if not, you can contact the school that your child attends. For the Bulldog Digital Academy students, that your homeschool can also give you this information. You'll also notice under the green bar where it says, forgot your username and password, if you made an account. You will be able to reset that here as well. Need an access code, I included the names of all the either building secretaries or guidance secretaries. At the high school, middle school and all the elementary schools. You know, the Bulldog Digital Academy is a little bit more of, it's a combination of lots of different buildings, so. One other piece of information you should have received in, from your child's school is information about updating OneView. So OneView is a way for you to go in and look at your contact information for your child. Make sure cell phones are correct. Make sure any doctor's information are correct or any allergies. I took these from our website. They're also on the Parent tab. Please do this because this information will update our automated calling system, Blackboard Connect. And a new program we're using this year called Remind. Remind is a program that will allow us to have improved communication between school and home. I included in here and will, you should be getting more information and maybe you're already receiving texts. I know Mrs. Rizzi at Maple Leaf is just the queen of the texts right now. But all you need to do to join a building is to text 81010, the at symbol and the code for each school. So more information will be coming out about this. All the teachers have been trained, so you might be getting classroom codes for some of the classes for your children. GoGuardian is something that we're using to filter the internet on the Chromebooks. And it's also gonna be a way for the teachers to actually then send information to students and see what they're doing during the online class time. So at this point, what I would like to do is I'm going to. Exit. The presentation. I have a lot of tabs open in the background with some of the programs that you might have questions about. So I'm going to go back into. The chat, so I can go ahead and. Get some of the questions answered, so hold on a second. There we go. I got 10. Thank you, Mr. Hanky.
No, no problem. What I've tried to do, Mrs. Bailey, is answer some myself and then also, the ones that are kind of repeating, I've kinda tried to encapsulate them.
Excellent.
I know there was, there are some questions having to do with the Guidance Department. If you're have, if anyone's having a, an issue with getting in touch with the Guidance Department, you're more than welcome to. Again, try to, try to contact them tomorrow. If, if, if worse comes to worse, please send me an email. And I'll, I'll see if I can, I can help with that.
Okay, that sounds great. So, a question is, my daughter's in second grade, what time is the remote learning starting tomorrow? Lots of questions about Chromebooks being locked, so I did talk about that. If your Chromebook is locked, please connect it to your Wi-Fi at home. It should receive the unlock signal. It might possibly need a restart, but once it's connected to the Wi-Fi, your Chromebook should unlock. As far as the second grade and what time the remote learning starts tomorrow. Mr. Hanky or Mr. Patton, I might refer to you because I'm working, I. I know I've seen the start time, but I'm not 100% sure what time it is.
Yeah, so I, and Mr. Patton chimed in in case I goof anything up, but I just sent in the chat to everyone the starting times for. The elementary schools, Maple Leaf, Elmwood, William Foster.
Thank you.
And the middle schools. Let me just go back here, cuz I just, okay, middle and high school times are 7:30 A.M. to 2:20 P.M. Those are a little different. Somebody asked about study hall because there's a study hall in their schedule. They do not have to log in for study hall. But what will happen is, is that that's there, so when, when we do come back to school, it's in the schedule. Elementary schools are 8:15 to 2:45 P.M.
If I just chime in, one thing I would say is that you should log in at least five or eight minutes early every morning. Also know that the teachers will be accessing or letting you into your Zoom sessions. So if they don't answer or bring you in right away, is that they're letting probably their, their class, so it could be a variety of, depending on how many students are in that class. It could take a few minutes for that to turn over, so just be patient. We, we say three things that were, especially for the beginning of the year is. As patience, flexibility and then creativity and the teachers will do that as the beginning of the school year, but we wanna ensure you. That just, especially the first couple of days are gonna be bugs that we will have to work out. And the teachers are there to help support and help you as they kind of navigate through this new time that we go forward for the beginning of the school year.
Yes, Mrs. Bailey, one other chat. To differentiate, if a person has a laptop and does not use their Chromebook, is preferred, can you speak to that?
Yes, I can. It is preferred. That students use District Chromebook. For various reasons, one for the filtering, one for the programs being loaded and apps and extensions being loaded for Google Chrome. But I certainly understand that, that that might be the case, that there is a device at home that your student can use. Students can log into ClassLink Launchpad and get access to all those apps from any device. So that should not be a problem. And the. The URL for that actually. I'm gonna go ahead and move some of my chats here around. Hang on one second. So I can see it. When the, when the students go ahead and they log into the, their Google account, they will automatically see ClassLink. I see ClassLink's not up here on the website, so we'll make sure that I do that when we get done today. But they definitely can log in. It's just some of the features for our GoGuardian, as far as communicating with teachers, some of those features are not gonna be available, but all the programs will be. Somebody asked a question about purchasing insurance online, that they had a problem with that. If you'd like to email, you know, pretty much with anything, if you email technologydepartment@GHBulldogs.org. We will either direct you in the right direction, if we can't answer the question, or we will definitely answer your question. So how do you figure out what your child's password is if you're new to the district? In the presentation, I gave the list of people to contact, middle school, high school. But again, just email Technology Department, give us your child's name and the school and we'll get back to you right away. I tried to email several Bulldog personnel, but the email was returned. Hold on one second, I've got more. So all of our staff on our district website, under the Board of Education, there's a Staff Directory. And you can search for any of our staff if you have a question about their email address. Typically, most of us are first initial, last name. But a few of us have been around long enough, have a middle initial in there and that might be what actually threw that off. So if you just go to the Staff Directory on the website. And you can go ahead and search for a student, or you can look up the list of everybody in the building and you can find out their email addresses. Okay, let me scroll back up here, second grade, quick cards not working. I know quick, there, there definitely been a problem with some of the quick cards and we're actually working on that. If you need a username and password for your trial, we'll definitely get that to you. Again, just email Technology Department. Under Google Class, which app is for Zoom? For the Digital Academy, when students log into their computer, they're logging into Google Classroom. Yes, they should log into Google Classroom. Their teacher should have invited them to join their class already. That should be done. They should have a class set up already. How do we restart the Chromebooks? It's still locked even after I connected it to my Wi-Fi. If you'd like to email the ASATag number and the name of your student to Technology Department, we'll make sure we unlock that for you cuz we can do it. What is the Technology Department email again? It's Technology Department. I'm actually on the chat here, so I'll put it. On here as well. Technologydepartment@GHBulldogs.org.
Mrs. Bailey, can I?
Absolutely.
Questions coming over the chat. Someone asked, Allison Shai, it looks like, why, why are there study halls if we're not letting seniors back for the year? This is, seniors will, 11th and 12th graders, if. Things go really well and we're able to come back full without social distancing. That, we, we plan on bringing 11th and 12th graders back. That would be dependent on a number of things though. So that's why those things are in there. I saw a couple of questions about hotspots. Let me say something about hotspots. The district sourced. A number of hotspots. We are reserving those for our families that have. A financial issue or something that's, some sort of barrier for them that, that, that they're not able to get internet at home. So please be cognizant of that. If you're requesting a hotspot, we, we are, we are trying to make sure we have enough for our neediest families. Also, if you have a laptop. You know, should you get a Chromebook? I think the response to that, Miss Bailey, is yes, you should. District Chromebook. We're able to support them remotely. They are filtered. And they will allow students to access everything probably in the most optimal way. Does that make sense? Okay.
That, that does make sense. Can I use my auto insurance to cover the Chromebook cost? I'm not 100% sure about that. You might wanna check with your insurance. Company. If you have a personal device and you did not pick up a Chromebook, you can still pick up that Chromebook that, I would just recommend contacting that your school. And tell them that you would like to do that, so they can make sure that it's available for you. Allison Shai did ask another question here. Allison's actually one of our seniors.
Yeah, and, and again, Allison, we, we have those in, in there because we couldn't, we can't change the system and I believe that they're holding. Physical education classes remotely as well. So that, that's why those are there.
With the hopes that we might be returning. We can hope. That's a good, good idea. I just sent a message here about Technology Department here again, our Technology Department email address. So if you definitely have a question, without a doubt, call your child's school. You can email the Technology Department. If that one particular Chromebook did not unlock, please email. The ASATag number on the back and the name of your child and we can unlock it remotely. You do not have to come in. Can you use your personal email to email the Technology Department? Yes, you can. If you are a student who's messaging me right now. Certainly, go ahead and use your school account, but yes, you can.
I'll, I'll answer the one about the elementary specials and then Mr. Patton chime in again. Elementary specials are taking place. I believe that they're working on a rotational basis. And the, the teacher will have, the teachers, whomever you have, will have more to say about that starting tomorrow.
Yes, and the, the teachers that are, the special teachers have their own Zoom links. So they will be sharing that, whether it's the, the classroom teachers, but they will have a link to their class during that time. And again, teachers will share that information, especially the beginning of the day, what the schedule will look like and what they're doing, because the specials may rotate from day to day as well.
So this video is obviously gonna be recorded. It's gonna be on the district's channel. I'm also gonna send some information out to the teachers as well. We did that today already with some of the questions about. GoGuardian and some questions about logging in. I'm hoping the teachers are gonna start using Remind to message students and the parents. And share that information out to all of you, because the more we spread out the information, the better everybody's going to. The better, everybody's gonna have less problems with getting us started.
Let me say something about CVCC students. It looks like in their schedules right now, and we're working out some of the kinks on this, that there is an overlap. You will get all of your classes. And you will not be late to them. It, I think, I believe that they've made some, some provisions for that, but it's gonna take a couple of days to make sure that that's worked out appropriately.
Okay. Okay, there's a CBCC. Who can I contact to have my child enrolled the whole year remotely for seventh grade? Well, I believe the initial Bulldog Digital Academy, you had to commit to the first semester. I would imagine at the end of the first semester, then we are going to be finding out who's gonna stay in the academy. Would that be correct? Yes.
Yes, so. Yes. So the Digital Academy did have a, a cutoff for registration. However, we will be reopening that at the semester. And we're going to go from there. If you have just registered your child, however, please contact us and we'll take a look at it. Oh, late arrival too. I think there's some confusion about that. There were some people saying, are there late arrivals this year? We, we've had in the past every Thursday, a late arrival that, that we will not have those. Some people at the high school may have late arrival on their schedule. That, that's still there. That's different. That's every day. That means your class doesn't start until later in the, in the morning.
And then the one question about the Zoom links, I think that the teachers have a link for every class each day when they set that up. Is that correct, Sheri, on that?
Yes, that is correct. It depends if they're using Zoom or Google Meet. You can, but both in all cases, when they go to Google Classroom, whatever link they're using for class that day will be listed right there. So they will be putting that in Google Classroom. Correct. Are there still Chromebooks available? Yes. We have Chromebook set up for every student. So this parent said that they work late and can I have a grandma pick one up? Absolutely, you can. What we're just asking is just confirmation because there is a form that we're asking people to fill out just to confirm that you picked it up. So probably the best thing would be to reach out to your child's school or schools and talk to the building secretary and or principal and we'll definitely make arrangements to get those to you. Or have a grandma pick it up. Absolutely. How will testing be done?
That's, I, I actually can talk about that. There is a bill pending in the Ohio Legislature right now to not have state testing for the 2020, 21 school year. That is winding its way through the legislature right now. So we, we're not quite certain what's going to happen with that. The, the one part of testing that we are going to be doing is nap testing. That's benchmark testing and we do have a way to do that remotely. And you'll get more information as the year unfolds here in the next week or two.
Okay. So there's another question here, Mr. Hanky, that says, will the the child need to be in front of the Chromebook the whole day besides lunch? Why I'm asking if, you know, somebody has a doctor's appointment or something. And certainly I would say that they could reach out to the teachers involved if, when you do have an appointment, just like it would be for school. But there is, you know, it's different whether it's middle school or high school and there's maybe forty five or forty two minutes per class versus a couple hour period. But the expectation is that the children will be online for class time. Somebody asked if the current Google Classrooms will load tomorrow? I think that the teachers are setting them up and they're inviting students to them or they're sending out the invite code so they can join them. So that certainly will be that certainly will be happening tomorrow. Yes.
Just a reminder, folks, there, there is one message here that I think is, is they're trying to be kind of funny. Please, let's stay on track here with this because every, every other question's been excellent. And we don't want to have this, have to shut this, this down. So please be mindful of that. ACT and SAT testing right now, we are moving forward with that and we will get information out to you shortly. The Learning Center question, it will say high school, but that schedule will be through, with Learning Center teachers. So that should be fine, even though it says high school. And I said, Mrs. Bailey just answered that last one. The scheduling question about study halls before, right after CBCC before the, the academic classes. That's just a matter of where they were able to fit classes in. Every year, online or not. It's a, you know, they have to, it's kind of a puzzle they piece together in terms of scheduling. They do the best they can with the, with the amount of staff that we do have.
So if your Chromebook is still locked, even after you connect it to the wifi, please email. There's an asset tag on the back of the Chromebook and your child's name and we will definitely, we can send the unlock signal to the Chromebook remotely. So please do that. If you receive the wrong charger, please contact your child's school so you can make arrangements to stop by and somebody will new one. Let's see what else here.
Can I say one thing about that?
Yes.
Reaching, reaching out to your child's school is the best. We have support staff that are going to be in the buildings each and every day helping with odds and ends and that may, that families may have. So we've set this up in place where we have staff members working. So like a Chromebook charge or a cord not working or a technology issue, there, we will have administration administrators into the buildings as well as support staff to get out to the families to help them through this time. So just let you know that again, reaching out to your child's building, a lot of times will be the easiest way to help solve when you have issues coming forward.
So if you have a password that's not working, please go ahead and send us an email. We'll be responding to those as well.
Okay, what, what I think I'll do is we, we just have questions. Various questions coming in, but I would like, you can keep them kind of coming, but I would like to start the wrap up, Mrs. Bailey. Does that make some sense?
I think that's a great idea. When in doubt, ask for help is, I guess, is what I want to say. Our goal is to make sure that we can make this as smooth as possible for everyone. And I, I hope that the presentation helped. If you have a question about the Chromebook, something's not working right. Scroll back in the video and look at when your child logs in and goes to ClassLink, find that icon so you can open a ticket. So we will make sure that we take care of that for you.
So a couple of things because it's the first day of school tomorrow. First of all, is, is Mr. Patton said, patience, creativity and flexibility are the watchwords right now. There are going to be a lot of people on the internet at the same time throughout the county. There, there are many districts that are remote, which will cause, may cause some bandwidth issues. There may also be some times where we're working on some things on our end if we do have some issues where, you know, we're trying to optimize our connection for the kids. So just bear with us and be patient with us the next few days. Because this is unprecedented in terms of, even from the spring, in terms of the amount of people and the amount of time we'll have them online. And, and please know that we are, we are working diligently to make sure that this, this program, the remote learning and the Digital Academy program are as effective as possible. And as I've said before, there's nothing I'd like, I'd like more than to wave a wand and have this go away, but unfortunately, this is where we are and my hope is, is that if, if we can get to a point where we can welcome students back, we will do that. However, for the first nine weeks at least, we will, we will be under the remote learning program. You know, it looks like right now there's a hundred and sixteen of you watching. If any issues you do have, please, I think the homeschool is your first stop. Is that correct? Yes. And then, and then you can go from there. We, and if there are hardware issues, let us know. So with that, Ms. Hamilton, do you have anything to add to end things that I haven't thought of?
Um, no, I just know one person mentioned that their eight-year-old is concerned about distance learning and that she's scared. I would just say to relieve any of your students anxieties, just have a talk with them tonight. This is something that's very different. Um, again, you know, be patient with them, have patience. There are, you know, we're doing this calls for, to be informative, but we know that there are things that are going to occur. And so again, just feel free to reach out to the district and just talk with the kids and let them know. You know, the teachers are working with them. This is new to everyone and they don't need to be worried or anxious about this. It's enough support to help them get the academic experience that they would have if they weren't doing in-person learning.
Oh, yeah. And actually, there's very good questions about PE class. Yeah, it's going to be remote. You're going to be up and moving in front of the computer. And that's going to be a good thing. And we'll go from there. With that.
All right. I'm just answering one more question about shared parenting and that Chromebooks can be used at more than one wifi and more, more than one location. So I thank you very much for everyone. Go back and watch this video. Make sure you ask questions, contact the homeschool because it's our goal to make sure that we get everybody up and running as soon as possible.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, everybody. Have a great night.